Well, as far as I know.
Alex. Si me voy, ya sabes que es aprobar esta. Si me voy, si me voy. Es, es, es. Yeah, I'll make it. Thank you.
Hey Louis.
How's it going?
Good, good. How are you? Who we? Had to take the stairs. So I'm out of breath. Who we? I know, right? It was for us.
Louis, Louis.
Well, Henry took us to eight, so we just ran up the stairs. It's just a, yes, we ran.
Cause she, she just gave it up as one floor.
But we ran. I'm like, good thing we have to lug this thing up. We have been in trouble.
From the order to cancel some meeting of October sixth, twenty twenty, December, pledge of leavings. Pledge your right of your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, Mayor. Quorm is present for City Council, Successor Agency, and Housing Authority.
Public comment. Members of the public, choose to submit comments electronically for consideration by the Inglewood City Council Successor Agency Housing Authority by sending them to the city clerk or the secretary at Y Horton at CityofInglewood.org and deputy city clerk A Phillips at CityofInglewood.org. To ensure distribution to the members of the legislative body prior to consideration of the agenda, you must submit them prior to eight AM the day of the meeting. In the body of the email, please identify the agenda item or subject matter. Correspondent should indicate the meeting date and the agenda item. By telephone, listening to the meeting and making oral public comments, members of the public can participate in the meeting by telephone to listen and make comments by doing the following. The conference begins at one thirty PM Pacific time, and all interested parties may join the conference five minutes prior. If you're dialing in from a cellphone, please call from an area with good reception. Calls from landline phones are recommended. If you're watching the meeting by Facebook Live or Channel thirty-five, it's requested that you mute the sound of your video feed if you're on the phone, as it is delayed from the phone transmission. Additionally, when you're making public comments on the phone line, you will be inaudible due to feedback. To dial in, dial eight 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 two five one two nine four nine or two one five eight six one oh six nine four using the specific access codes detailed for this date, October sixth, twenty twenty. The access code is three five eight seven three four pound. Excuse me? Oh, okay. Three five eight, excuse me. The access code is three five eight nine seven three four pound. Thank you, councilman. And to view and listen without making public comments on Spectrum Cable Channel thirty-five with audio unlimited video, or you can view without making public comments live online through Facebook Live with audio unlimited video at www.facebook.com/cityofInglewood. And that's a front slash. And so with that, operator, are there any people online for public comment?
Once again, to make a public comment, please dial pound two on your telephone keypad. And we do have a couple callers here in the queue. Caller, please go ahead. Your line is unmuted.
Give us your item number, caller.
Ah, yes, I'd like to speak on, on the agenda. Oh, I'm Gil Matthew, wait, wait, hold on. Yeah, I'm Gil Matthew, District Four. I just speak on item number four. On the payment of Vincent Vincent. Uh, my question is, Vincent Vincent Fox is a county fund. Now, why, uh, you know, would be maintain that and do we get county funds that you're paying from the general fund? Okay, and item number six, seven, and eight. You have a construction company with H H J. I want to know, do you vex those companies? That is a one man company on one hundred and eleventh and Main. And you've given three or four contracts with solid relations. And I'm not sure if you guys bet, uh, what's going on with the construction company contract with, with the FAA. And also, again, on the warrant register, you're having, uh, famous paid on the right, right register with the same operation that you have. You have, you're paying with, uh, uh, city checks, but yet you have no fund and no organization. And you're paying a lot of, uh, checks from the, uh, department with, uh, that's that well as in, public works. Now, what are you using for the money or what is the source of the fund? And again, on the one register two, you have a situation where you are overseeing the payment of the bills. But you would take twelve payments and make sure they're following your payment policy. In other words, that's oversight. But yet still, you know, payment of bills, okay. And then, okay, I, 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 so on it. But I'd like to remind you that as a counsel, you are responsible of payment of the bills, and you're also responsible that they are valid payments. But yet, you have no knowledge who's paying what. And you just, I, 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 so on it. We allow payment of bill. So I don't know if that's a technical thing to say, well, we allow it and other people are responsible. But yet, you know, you are city.
That's the caller, operator. Next caller.
Caller, your line is unmuted. Please go ahead and state your name and comment. Caller, please confirm that you're not muted on your line. We are not able to hear you.
How are you? Hello, I have to call back. I have a very bad reception. Thank you.
We can hear you fine.
Oh, I, I can't, I can barely hear you.
I know, but we can hear you, and that's the important thing.
Oh, okay. No, I was, I was, uh, I'm going to comment about the, uh, the business that is applying for a, uh, a liquor license on four hundred West, uh, Manchester Boulevard. Can I do that?
No, that's not on the agenda, sir. That's a public hearing, and that'll be later.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right. Operator, any more callers?
There's one more caller in the queue. Caller, please go ahead. Your line is unmuted. Caller, please go ahead. You may be muted on your end. We cannot hear you. Mayor, would you like to move forward?
I'd like to move to the next caller, operator.
There are no more callers in the queue.
Okay, with that, we'll close public comment. Let's see. Item one, CSA one and H one.
Warrant register.
Madam clerk.
Council members, successor agency members, and housing authority members, Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Chairman Butts.
Aye. PH one.
Mayor, it's a public hearing to consider amendment to Inglewood Municipal Code Chapter eight and twelve, including zoning code amendment two zero one eight dash zero one, ZCA two zero eight dash zero one, to establish short-term rental regulations.
Table the public hearing to October twenty seventh, twenty twenty at two PM. Madam clerk, what's the next scheduled matter?
Yes, Mayor. The next scheduled matter is a public hearing to consider an appeal of Planning Commission Resolution Number one eight five three, denying special use permit number two zero one nine dash zero one four, SP two zero one nine dash zero one four, to allow the sale of beer and wine for off-site consumption within existing convenience market at four hundred West Manchester Boulevard.
Has the notice of the hearing been given in time, form, and manner as required by law, and do you have the affidavit on file?
Notice has been given, and an affidavit is on file along with the planning commission's file.
Madam clerk, have you received any communications on the matter?
No communications have been received.
Is there a staff report on this matter, Mr. Fields? Thank you, Ms. Wilcox.
Good afternoon, mayors, council. For you today is an appeal of the Planning Commission denial of special use permit twenty nine fourteen, which was a request to sell beer and wine from an existing mini mart. The Planning Commission denied the request on December fourth, two thousand nineteen, with the determination that they could not make the public convenience or necessity finding required by the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control. And the location is shown here at Inglewood and Manchester. The applicant later submitted an appeal request in early twenty twenty, but before the hearing was held, the applicant requested that the hearing be postponed for six months. The applicant's request to sell the beer and wine from three locked and refrigerated coolers as well as one locked, non-refrigerated area. In total, the alcohol sales area would comprise forty square feet, which is approximately three percent of the total store floor area. And because ABC considers the subject census tract over-concentrated, the city must make a finding that either public convenience or public necessity is served with this proposed beer and wine request. The locations of other off-site alcohol sales are shown here on this map. ABC allows for two off-site licenses in the census tract before it's considered over-concentrated. And should the council determine to overturn the denial, in addition to the public convenience or necessity finding, the council resolution will need to reflect support for the Inglewood Municipal Code findings shown here. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Right now, are there any persons online that would wish to make a comment to address the council on this matter, operator?
We do have one person here in the queue. As a reminder, dialing pound two will indicate that you wish to make a comment. Caller, your line is unmuted. Please go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I'm Gil, Gil Matthew, District Four. I'd like to speak in favor of the tenant or the applicant. What is happening here, you say about a census tract? And the census tract is ten years old. And number, number two, ABC and adjacent tracts, they still have free openings for it, uh, plenty license, which is beer and wine. And number three, if you business print, and you claim you are, why would you deny a businessman in a area where it's off sale? And he has convenience store, but one stop shopping, and he meets all the criteria. And in fact, there was a full package at each liquor store, right purchase of the business. Sometimes, you know, we must have common sense, which is not so common in Inglewood on these commissions. And yet, you, you go and you put somebody trying to do a business, trying to be friendly to the community. And here, it's one-stop shopping. It's convenience shopping. Other purchases are in left on the counter because they have to go somewhere else to buy beer or wine. I think, you know, sometimes the city might have common sense towards business. And I note with interest, none of you are business. So you're just going by, you know, what it brought before you are, I don't know how you make this. But this is not anything for, and they complain about going, getting upgrades on the business. How the man is going to do upgrades?
You got forty more seconds. It's going to be tough, Gil.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, no. You got forty more seconds.
Well, I have some more time.
Yes.
Okay, I'm a businessman, and I know what it means to have a convenience store. And what people enjoy in convenience stores is what you call one-stop shopping, neighborhood shopping. In fact, you don't go to, to a bout. Get one or two items, you know, with one item, one shop. Have everything in there. So I think, uh, you should give him some consideration.
Gil, we're out of time. We're out of time. Operator, next caller.
Caller, please go ahead. Your line is unmuted.
Hi there, this is Maranda. I'm the owner for the four hundred West Manchester.
Go ahead.
Yeah, hi there. I applied for beer and wine. I just want to say it's going to be only three to five percent of beer and wine in the whole store. And we are helping the community. We have EBT, wake service, and all other stuff like convenience store. We need that beer and wine just to stay in business in this critical time, so we can do, we can still supporting the business. So the main concept is still is a convenience store. That's why we have all other facilities for the local community. EBT, wake, stationary, all kind of stuff, one, one, uh, one-stop shop. But still, we need to support our own, uh, stores. So that's why to stay in business, we need that beer and wine. And it's a family-owned business. We don't hire any employees from outside. It's my family work. And it's only, like, uh, the beer gonna consumption is, will be only three to five percent.
Thank you, caller. Thank you. Operator, any other callers?
There are no further callers in the queue.
Okay, we've seen public input. Is there any council input?
I have some there.
Council Morales.
Thank you. Uh, this convenience store is in my area. When, uh, it's on the corner of, uh, Inglewood and Manchester, I believe. It, when I grew up, it was an actual liquor store, run by a, a very nice Korean family. And my understanding since this has come up, I've done my research. They still own the actual property. The parents have passed, and they, they leased it out to this particular family. I spent the last few months just kind of seeing how they operated and what they did to clean up both the parking lot and indoors and what they offer. And, and, you know, what they're looking for is only beer and wine. So, so I am going to support this because I believe that when it was empty, it caused a lot more issues for that area. And what ended up happening is that people would see the extra parking space, different things, and they would use it as excess parking. There was a lot of traffic there we didn't like. And now, since this has happened, it's actually turned it up a little bit. Uh, the one thing that I would request is that they forbid any single can sales. If we, Mindy, if, Ms. Wilcox, if we could add that. If we, Mindy, if Ms. Wilcox, if we could add that, no single can sales. And if that's the case, then I would support the request to overturn the Planning Commission denial. In addition to that, you know, our city is changing. I can completely see, you know, there was a time where I would not even consider offering this. But our city has changed and it's become a very, you know, working-class, very positive and growing community in that space. And they really do use the convenience stores for convenience. Aside from that, when you have these convenience stores and they are competing against the seven-elevens, you're putting them up against a wall if we don't allow them to compete fairly. And this is something that I bring up because what ends up happening is we end up squeezing them to the point where they have to leave the lot empty. And, and that's kind of where my decision stemmed after, and then after visiting and feeling comfortable with the family, both the owner family and the owner of the actual convenience store. I'm fine with this. I would, I would turn to my colleagues and say that I do so as a well-thought-out decision. And I would make that request for no single can sales, and that's for your support in that.
Okay, so, so your motion is to overturn.
The Planning Commission.
And denial and to grant S P twenty nineteen dash oh fourteen. That's your motion.
Correct.
And I'm gonna have a comment that I would have to say I wholeheartedly agree with that, particularly with the prohibition on the single can sales. Because at four hundred West Manchester, you can go right down to Inglewood Avenue and Manchester and do the same thing. And why would we squeeze out a non-franchisee, small business and have them be at a competitive disadvantage with a chain? So, you know, I totally agree with you.
Thank you.
And I'll second. There's a comment from District Two and then District Four.
Thank you, mayor. And so I just want to add that I actually had an opportunity and have had an opportunity to go into that market because I frequent the other shops in that center. There's a Chinese restaurant, barber shop, and a Mexican restaurant right in that little plaza. And, and I can tell you that they've always been very professional. It's always been very clean. Right now, the Mexican restaurant has outside dining, as many restaurants have nowadays. But there's no litter around that area.
It's immaculate.
I noticed that even this weekend. I happened to be over there. And so, you know, I agree that we need to give these, as I call them mom and pops, an opportunity to continue to grow our community. They've been here through the thick and thin. The Korean family, as Councilman Morales said, has owned this property for many, many years. And when I was there, actually, maybe even about a month ago, I ran into the owners. They were there cleaning up the parking lot, you know, just making sure everything was done right. So, you know, I really do think this is a move in a positive direction for our community, for the residents, especially that live around that area. And so I just wanted to make sure folks understand that they are keeping that area clean.
Councilman Franklin?
Yes, I'm interested to find out that my colleague, Councilor Morales, said that he remembered it when it was a liquor store, considering that it was a liquor store for thirty-one years.
Yeah.
And it wasn't until when they, the last operator closed in twenty sixteen, and then they reopened in twenty nineteen, you did have that void. And then you had the problems of people wanting to hang out in the parking lot, et cetera, because it was a vacant building. Now that is still up and at 'em. And with the COVID nineteen issue, they need as much business as they can acquire. And as you heard on, not only the applicant, but also the residents saying the one-stop shop, it is a convenience. And this would be comparable to that of the others in the surrounding area. My only question to you, Councilman Morales, in reference to the one can being restricted, is that consistent with the surrounding stores that provide the same type of product?
You know, it is not. It is not. But it is a practice that I hope we adopt moving forward. I know there's a liquor store down the street. It's, I won't name it, but it's on the corner of Cedar and Manchester, who my wish would adopt some of the practices that this convenience store has. And, and this is the problem I have, you know, that, that stores like this don't have to compete with stores like that. And it's, it's, we need to put them in a better position to, to do the right thing. Like Alex said, he's absolutely right. I mean, it's, it's one of the cleaner little strip malls that there is, and we need to help them succeed. But that being said, Councilman, you're right. It is not common practice, but I hope moving forward it is. And at least at this, at this place, it will be.
So a trendsetter, and if mayor has not been second of his motion, I still make it.
It's already been second.
Okay.
Councilman.
I'd like to make the.
Yes, Councilman, go first.
I also had visited the store for years. The liquor store had been there for, I don't know how long. It's a great little strip mall. Matter of fact, I eat at the Mexican restaurant down there. So it, like you have said, it's a very clean, well-taken-care place. And that's what we need in the city of Inglewood. I also agree with Mr. Matthews, which I hate to say. It is a convenience store. And that's one thing that people use. And then when they go in there, they don't have to leave the convenience store and go to Ralph's or Barnes or whatever. They wanna do their little shopping, pick up one or two items and go home. So I agree with the council that we should overturn the, the Planning Commission and allow this operator to open this store for the convenience.
Okay, so, madam clerk, before you, you'd call the roll, please note for the record that on this date, a councilman agreed with Gil Matthews.
Unanimous, on the record.
That is significant in and of itself. Would you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Councilmembers Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye.
Before we do the consent calendar, is there a member from California cities here? So anyway, we have a pro. Okay, we have a proclamation for California Clean Air Day. Whereas air pollution contributes to higher rates of cancer, heart and lung diseases, which adversely affects health. And whereas compromised lung health has been linked to poor outcomes in people infected with COVID nineteen. And whereas California has some of the most polluted regions in the United States of America. And whereas it is vital that we protect the health and well-being of our residents, visitors and workforce. Whereas individual actions such as not idling vehicles, walking or biking to work and school, carpooling and conserving energy can directly improve air quality in the region, and everyone can play a role. And whereas Californians, we join together across the state to clean the air. And whereas participating in California Clean Air Day encourages communities to develop environmentally healthier habits and can be accomplished safely while wearing face coverings and practicing social distancing. Now therefore be it known that the mayor and council members of the city of Inglewood, California do hereby recognize California cities for its outstanding efforts in encouraging all residents, businesses, employees and community members to participate in Clean Air Day on October seventh, twenty twenty, presented the sixth day of October. Mrs. Sergeant at Arms, could you come and present this? Because we can't all get together right now. And our speaker? Go ahead, sir.
Mayor Butts, the Inglewood City Council. Thank you very much. My name is Chris Chavez, and I am the Deputy Policy Director for Coalition for Clean Air. It's my pleasure to be here again. I was here last year under slightly different circumstances. But I want to thank the city of Inglewood for their continued support for California Clean Air Day. And perhaps the need for clean air is no clearly more demonstrated, given the COVID crisis. Studies have shown, increasingly, numbers of studies have shown that exposure to air pollution is a factor in experiencing severe COVID symptoms. Not only does that mean that all Southern Californians are at risk for more symptoms due to our air quality, but also our communities of color and low-income communities are disproportionately impacted. Communities of color and low-income communities often experience more air pollution due to a variety of factors, a variety of reasons. And coupled with poor health outcomes, disparities in health access and other challenges, are particularly susceptible to COVID. Clean Air Day is an opportunity for all Californians and the residents of Inglewood to take steps to reduce their own emissions impact locally, whether that's through using less harsh cleaners, taking public transportation, taking electric transportation or active transportation where it's available, and really making an impact in their own lives to contribute to cleaner air in California. California's climate leadership is only as strong as the people's climate leadership. And California Clean Air Day is an opportunity to engage and demonstrate the commitment of all Californians to a clean, healthy environment. Thank you very much for your time, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So we're going on to consent calendar items two through eight.
Second.
Madam clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, mayor. Councilmembers Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. D R one?
Staff report recommending approval of Amendment Number four to Agreement Number nineteen dash one-five-five with Nosman LLP increasing the contract by an additional three million, one hundred thousand dollars for payment of legal services being provided to the city.
Move one and two.
Second.
Second.
Madam clerk.
Councilmembers Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Butts.
Aye. D R two?
Staff report recommending approval of Amendment Number one to Agreement Number twenty dash zero eight four with Truffaletti Consulting, Inc., to provide program management services for the Inglewood Transit Connector Project, increasing the contract amount by an additional amount not to exceed four million, five hundred eighty-eight thousand, seventy dollars.
Move one and two.
Second.
Before the vote, is there a presentation?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Atwell, this, this is a multi-layered set of agreements that we are considering today, council, for a project that will provide eventually a people mover to move people from the metro station at, physically located at Florence and Market Street to bridge approximately one point, four miles between that station and the, the sports entertainment district. And it's expected to move somewhere between ten and eleven thousand people per hour. And so we're gonna have a presentation. Perhaps.
Yeah, if not, I'll just go ahead and speak for, okay, here we go. We have it on, on the monitor. Good afternoon, mayor and council. I'm Louis Atwell. I'm Assistant City Manager and Public Works Director. With me today, I have Lisa Truffaletti of Truffaletti Consulting. One of the department reports is for her contract, for Truffaletti Consulting's contract amendment. Just want to give a little update so far. So progress to date. We've refined the I T C project to three stations. Originally, there were five stations. We brought it down to three stations to make it less costly and more efficient and more effective in what we're doing as far as moving people to and from the metro station down to the entertainment district. We also secured a ninety-five point two million dollar State of California T I R C P grant. And we've also secured unanimous approval with the help of the mayor and also Councilman Franklin to move money from the highway funds over to the transit funds. As well as we've been developing options for governing, owning and managing the I T C, we're currently working with Metro with the mayor's help in forming a joint powers authority with, with Metro. And we're still working through that process, but we're very hopeful that they'll join us in that process. And in addition, we've completed procurement, which actually you're, we've completed the procurement, but we're going through the approval process today for five contracts, which include financial, civil, architectural and A P M operating system advisory services for the I T C project. But it also includes program manager.
But let me like, give the overarching summary so that, you know, people that are watching can understand what we're talking about. What we're talking about is a connection between the cringe online that's at Florence and Market and the sports entertainment district. There are several components to making that happen. First, you have to finance the entirety of the project, which is gonna be somewhere between the seven hundred to nine hundred million dollar range with contingencies. And so we have to figure those pieces out. We have actively been seeking grants. We, when I was Chair of the Metro Board, we were able to take advantage of a decennial transfer, a one-time, ten-year transfer of monies that were allocated from Measure R and M to highway transportation projects to mass transit projects. Being with the South Bay Cog and, and Councilman Franklin being a member of that committee and, and me being the Chair, we were able to finance a number of projects for the South Bay. One of them was a three hundred and twenty-three million dollar grant. Two thirty, two hundred and thirty-three million dollar grant towards this project for Inglewood. We also applied to the state. They had five hundred million dollars in grants funds, a T I R C P grant, which is a transportation grant available statewide. Of that, the city of Inglewood got ninety-five point two million. Almost twenty percent of the funding available statewide for a city that doesn't even have a bus. So we were very pleased about that. Now, so we, we continue on, we're gonna have to tap other financing modalities to ensure that the city isn't on the hook to run this conveyance and assume operational liability for it. And so that's what all of this is about right now. And it's, it's, it's amazing what we've been able to accomplish so far. We have a ways to go, but that's the, the underlying predicate of what Ms. Truffaletti and Mr. Atwell are going to present to us today.
Right. And again, right out on the street, we have our notice of preparation. We recirculated, and that public comment period will close on October twelfth. Shortly thereafter, the draft E I R will be released. But mayor, you're absolutely correct. We, we won the support with your leadership and the council's leadership to get the twenty million dollar grant from the state. There's five buckets of work they expect us to complete.
One more important key here. All of this work is chargeable against those grant funds. So that everyone understands we've really done an amazing thing. All the predicate work is going to be financed by the state. The initial payments will be from the general fund to be immediately refunded from the grants. Go ahead.
Yes. And there's five buckets of work. Program management, the project governance, and the environmental completion. And that would also include not only the CEQA, but also being allowing us to do N I P A work so we could go out for federal dollars. Rights of way, analysis and acquisition. And then the project advancement, procurement planning and project delivery preparation. So all of this is in a, in an agreement with the state. And we had, per their rules and eligibility, we also now released three R F Ps. Those are the five contracts before you. Financial advisory services, A P M operating system, architecture, urban design, A P M infrastructure, engineering and design. And so we went through a pretty competitive process, had a number of parties come out and compete, went through a full interview process. We had on our panel, and not only was it led by Louis Atwell and our finance department, we had Metro, one of their top heads of construction as part of the evaluation panel. And with all of that, again, five different contracts. But the first is Ernst &amp; Young. They're here to support the market sounding. They're gonna help us make sure we promote project feasibility. They're gonna help us estimate all the sources of funds, help us develop a detailed plan of finance, work with rating agencies, again, help us assess and support revenue generating opportunities. And again, support and pursue a full range of other grants that could be available to us, federal, state and other local grants to help the project continue on. And so that, that's Ernst &amp; Young. Again, they have experience across the country and here locally. And Ryan Yakubic is the project manager. He was the head of finance for Lawa and, and again, ran that. He was the head of finance for Lawa and, again, ran that whole program over there for the APM. Also, Gannett Fleming. These folks are gonna help us with project definition, advanced planning for the APM Operating System, help us with all the necessary engineering services for civil, structural, geotech, roadway, maintenance of traffic, utilities, you know, MEPs, construction logistics. And with their help, they're gonna help us really narrow down the costs and reduce the risks for the program to move forward. And we're really looking forward to their support in helping us move forward into the DBFOM and help us with their technical specifications. Again, this team, led by Mark Powalas, a wonderful leader in the field, and was a PM for Phoenix Sky Harbor International Airport Sky Train APM System, and he also worked on Lawa as well. The other contract is with Lee &amp; Elliott. Again, they're gonna help us with the APM Operating System itself. One of their key subs is SOM. They're gonna help us define the architect, the aesthetics, the urban design aspect, make sure we coordinate with all the applicable regulatory authorities, making sure this program complies with all the codes, helps us with cost estimating. And again, you know, it's with their help, they're gonna help us move forward into the DBFOM. They both, they all have worlds of experience in this type of infrastructure, APM for Lawa, Honolulu, again, Bart in Oakland, Miami mover, so a tremendous amount of experience they come to bear, and we appreciate them. We're gonna continue on with our services, carrying more burden on the environmental clearance, looking again at revenue streams that we can help create here in terms of, even in special elections that we may, you know, wanna come back and we'll talk to you about. And then Nosiman will continue on with their legal services, helping us with the heavy lift on drafting the procurement documents and future contracting. And I think, you know, just to wrap up, Louis, do you wanna talk through the next steps?
Sure.
Sure.
So the next steps are to secure the environmental certification, to establish the ITC governance structure, which is the JPA, revise all capital operations, maintenance costs for infrastructure and APM operating system, and we need to identify, analyze, and estimate sources and amounts of revenue. We can't do this without that. Develop a detailed plan of finance under an availability payment for the design, build, own, and maintain method of contracting. Prepare and release an RFQ and shortlist, and develop performance-based technical specifications and drawings. And of course, execute acquisition strategy and prepare and release the DBFOM request for proposal for implementation of the ITC project. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
So that's DR two. We have a first, a motion, and a second. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Budd.
Aye. DR three.
Staff report recommending approval of an amendment with Ernst &amp; Young LLC to provide financial advisory services for the Inglewood Transit Connector project.
Move one and two.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Budd.
Aye. DR four.
Staff report recommending approval of an agreement with Gannett Fleming, Inc., to provide automatic, automated, excuse me, people mover, infrastructure, engineering, and design consultant services for the Inglewood Transit Connector project.
Move one and two.
Say again. Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Budd.
Aye. DR five.
Staff report recommending approval of an agreement with Lee &amp; Elliott, Inc., to provide automated people mover operating system, architecture, excuse me, and urban design consultant services for the Inglewood Transit Connector project.
Move one and two.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmembers Dotson.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Morales.
Aye.
Franklin.
Aye.
Mayor Budd.
Aye. A one.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a closed session with the different bargaining groups. The negotiator for the city is Jose Cortez. As to that, a status on all the negotiation was provided to the city council and no action taken. And as for, there's no city attorney reports at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. CM one.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no oral reports from the city manager's office?
CC one.
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
There are no appointments to boards, commissions, and committees. Public comment by phone. Any person who should address city council on any matter connected with city business that elsewhere considered on the agenda may do so at this time. Operator, are any callers on the line?
Once again, to make a public comment, please dial pound two on your telephone keypad. And there are no comments. Oh, I apologize. There's one caller here in the queue.
One minute, one minute.
Callers, if your line is unmuted.
Gil Matthew, District Four, Mayor and City Council. I think this council must recognize that you have unlimited.
Wisdom?
Things that can happen in the South Bay. Otherwise, you can be a leader, but the need is mutual benefits for the representative and for its parents. There is so much misinformation in Inglewood. Nobody trusts any of you. Not anything personal against any of you human beings, but you're not reaching the residents. Your communication is lax. There's no media here, other than where you can get media, if not in the best interest of the city. You have residents here who are committed to this city.
Okay, you're at time, Mr. Matthew. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is that all of the?
Hey, Mayor, I apologize. I think we have someone else that has joined the line here that would like to speak. Can we see the caller?
Yes, I'm going, Mayor, but I just wanted to get your comment. I reached out to Councilman Padilla, George Dotson, I know Franklin, y'all, so you passed the service. You were in a situation at my mom's house when cop threatened me and you, the chief, and said he'll pull his gun on us, and I called you during that morning, and you told the chief to call me all morning. So that same cop still harassed me. You were of the situation at the youth center over on Cintinella at seventeen oh eight with the cricket manager of Chappie Bridges, and you walked into my building like it took like fifteen to my. And I told you for years that Cinder been harassing, and I offered a message on last Friday with the city manager. I know Ben, that Pacman, that Stephanie Fuller on board represent me, but Mr., I did a street car review, represented the police department with my gang stuff. You know, you in the entertainment, I paid you out of my interest.
Operator.
And.
Operator. Are there any other callers, operator?
There's one more caller here in the queue. Caller, please go ahead and state your name and comment.
Yeah, this is Billy with Africa Town Coalition. You know, you took thirty seconds from me last week, very petty, don't trip.
We'll give you another three seconds today.
Okay, whatever. The issue I was gonna bring up last week amongst many things that you all neglect as you look to build these stadiums and everything, the actual people that are paying the taxes again for your salaries and for these other monies you're using. Right now, the water quality in the city is terrible. I was shown a test about a month ago where the levels of the water is supposed to be like a zero point nine, but it came out to a toxic level of a five point something. And the same person has also been testing the water with their plants, and their plants are dying with this water. So if plants are dying with this water, it's having a serious effect on the people. But again, because you all are so focused on stadiums and all this other stuff, the more serious issues affecting the people, you are neglecting.
You still have another twenty seconds.
I don't need it, you know. You got another couple months before you get recalled.
Okay, that's wonderful. I need a vacation. Okay, operator, any other callers?
We do have one more caller here in the queue. Caller, your line is unmuted. Please go ahead and state your name and comment.
Yes, Mayor, but don't you go give me the free ten seconds? Don't I have ten seconds? I got them on a representative with four AM.
Operator, operator, you can't let somebody come back a second time, operator. So next time, ask for a name, please. All right, are any other callers, operator?
There are no other callers in the queue.
Thank you so much. Okay, council comment. Councilman Dotson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one item that I would really like for you to close this meeting in the name of one of my longtime residents. I've been here fifty years, and they were here when I came. Her name is Ms. Olivia Watts, and she was ninety-five years old. Other than that, everybody be safe. Make sure you wash your hands and stay a distance and wear your masks.
Councilman Padilla, District Two.
Great, thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of comments. I want to first congratulate Damon and Diana Harley for their grand opening of Glow &amp; Flow over at nine thirty-three North La Brea for a minority-owned business to open during these critical times with the COVID-19 and all the restrictions. For them to believe in Inglewood as a place to keep their business going, you know, speaks volumes. They're two local people that, you know, raising a family and believing what we're doing and put their money where their mouth is. And so, we did a ribbon cutting last week, and so, again, I want to congratulate Damon and Diana on the opening of the relaunch of Glow &amp; Flow. I also want to congratulate LA County Fire Department Anthony Dixon, celebrating his thirty years of dedicated service to our communities here in the greater LA County area. So, congratulations to you, Anthony. I also, you know, today, we, you know, RSI is a big issue, a big thing. I mean, we led the country in all the RSI projects, and, you know, Betty Griffith is sitting out here, and I want to thank you and your staff for putting these reports together, you know, volumes of stuff to look at, and today, we approved four of these projects. So folks that live in the area and the boundaries for RSI, congratulations. You're gonna get your buildings taken care of in the very near future. Today, we also looked at and did approve fencing, wrought iron fencing around the pool at the Vincent Park, something that, you know, I know the folks that use the park, I know the folks that are using the pool area, you know, are really gonna benefit from this. So again, these are the things that we, as your leaders, your elected officials, are doing to improve our community. People always say, well, where's our money going to? There are so many projects that we're working on. A lot of them, you don't see right away, you know, but there's some like doing the wrought iron fence around the pool. You'll see that sooner than later. And then I want to thank Anthony Lewis and his staff, great report on the Inglewood Transit Connector project. It's a huge project, folks, huge, huge. I mean, come on, think about this, that we're gonna have this people mover that's gonna go, you know, what is it, one point six miles, moving people through the downtown area to our Entertainment District? You know, things that most cities wouldn't even be attempting to do because the work involved in this, the monies that need to be, you know, raised and to put forward, and then to find the team to put this together. So I want to thank also, you know, Lisa Truffaletti and her folks and the other team members that are gonna make this happen for our community. So, you know, again, we continue to be moving in a positive direction, and I just want to thank all our staff, everybody where the rubber meets the road for making it happen. We are blessed to have the staff that we have here in the City of Inglewood. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Franklin, District Four.
Yes, I will echo the same sentiments as my colleague, Mr. Padilla, but also, I'd like to add, of current issues I'm dealing with in District Four is that on Crenshaw Boulevard, simply from one hundred and eleventh place going south to Imperial Highway, we've had not one, not two, but four far hydrants that's been severed due to auto accidents in the past year. I ask everyone to please obey the traffic signs, drive safely, and yield right away to others. In addition to that, we've had, currently, we're working on major water breaks, waterline breaks in the Imperial Village area. Staff immediately contacted the emergency team that went out there. They're finalizing everything up now, but thanks to the Public Works Department and this council for adopting the funny money we needed to set aside for emergency sake, that they were able to get on it over the weekend. And so, they're finalizing today, but it was this council that approved the funding needed for emergency purposes and is now proving its point why we need that. And on that note, everyone have a safe, safe day, and God bless you all. Thank you.
Councilor Morales.
Thank you, Mayor. More of the same, you know, in regards to the people mover, you know, what I find amazing is the fact that we talk about a project of that magnitude and we know we can get it done. You know, that has come a long way. We used to talk about projects in a way that were just kind of dreams. This is, I'm talking about fifteen years ago when I just got here. We tend to believe now, and I think that, of course, Mayor, I've always told you that I think that that was the difference, so you've done a great job with that. And the truth is that all of these projects, like Alex said, you know, you don't see many cities much larger than ours to try it, but for us to put it on our table and to speak of it, as we know, we're gonna get it done. So, that's a credit to everybody involved, and of course, Lisa, who's always been a great partner. Another item I want to focus on is just to thank the Parks and Rec program, who have done an excellent job of trying to bring back some use of our fields in a guarded way with some of the organizations, keeping the numbers down, making it so that it's non-competitive, but folks are in kind of their own little bubble with families they know and guarding the kids. And it's just gone so far in getting the kids out of school and getting them reestablished in kind of their regular routine. They're all wearing masks when they have to, and the parents are all kind of sitting in the outfield and separated. So I just want to thank the park for getting that structure and getting it ready. That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. First thing I want to say is that apparently, my baby cousin Sheila is watching us on Facebook, and she told me to stop being smart. I wanted to comment on the last caller's statement about our water levels. In the 2019 Water Quality Report, city water did not exceed any of the state, federal maximum contaminant levels. And you can go to our website, to the Archive Center, and you can pull up that report for anyone in the city that's interested in it. Additionally, in addition to this people mover, now, some people say, not a lot, no, two people say, why don't the football teams and the basketball team pay for the people mover? And here's something that needs to be understood, that transportation infrastructure is a responsibility of cities. Now, this, all these projects that customarily, there's two, three, four hundred, five hundred million dollars of investment by cities just to get these facilities built, our contribution has been zero dollars to any of these proposed structures. In addition, the SoFi Stadium Project has twenty-six acres over four parks of public land. They finance the streets, water infrastructure for us. We don't pay them anything back towards that investment until this year where we made more than twenty-five million dollars in total tax revenues, which means we get the public. more than $25 million in total tax revenues, which means we get the public infrastructure done for free, financed by these projects. Something that people don't think about is that when Metro originally planned the Crenshaw Line, they, and it's constructed this way right now, had Florence and Centinela at grade. And when I came into office, you know, I went down and talked about how that was going to destroy traffic patterns in the city. And that was just, if we never had the forum reopened, if we never had a professional sports team, and nobody listened. That was the reason I ran for the board with 48 hours' notice and was elected by the Southwest Corridor, which runs from Rancho PV up to Malibu. And during this time on the board, I was able to get that made a project. So, in addition to this people mover, we got $233 million dedicated to grade separate Florence and Centinela, which was important to us no matter what. So, what we've been able to accomplish, because our credibility is eons of a magnitude larger than what it was, we have people that are going to invest in the city. Investing in transportation infrastructure is critically important for the future. We have plans for shuttles and traffic mitigation measures right now with no people mover, but that's just low level. What we want to do is set up a project that will give us an opportunity to one day go further and connect all the way to the airport. This would just be a start. So, understand this, what the council is doing as opposed to what councils and mayors typically do, instead of just trying to get through the right here and now, we're setting the city up for the future, for the future. And this is something that we're doing for the residents, and I want people to be aware of that. So, whenever someone says, well, why don't you do something for the people? We do do things for the people. We have rent controls here, 3%, one of the lowest in the state. We've had a renter assistance program, and we're going to increase that amount for those people that apply. We have renewed the infrastructure of the city in the last five years at a rate that exceed, at a total construction of lane miles of roadway, linear feet of sidewalk, alleys reconstruction, in the last five years, more than was done in the prior 25 years combined. At the same time, we've managed to amass more unrestricted reserves to a point of quintupling what was there in 2011. So, I really want to compliment the council and the staff on setting the city up for the future. The things that we're able to do in this crisis period in this country is nothing short of remarkable. And so, with that, I want to close the meeting in the name of Olivia Watts, and we're adjourned.